I'll call the order this Ellsworth City Council Monday, January 13th, 2020. And just remind everybody, if you have electronic devices, to please put them on silence. We'll have public comment period as we always do, an opportunity for you to get up and talk about any issue that's not on the agenda. If there is an item on the agenda and you'd like to speak to it, just let me know and you will have a chance to do that as well. With that, the Pledge of Allegiance. I should note that all councilors are present. The rules of order, we follow Robert's rules of order and all of the rules that we adopt at the organizational meeting. So with item four, the adoption of minutes from the following meetings of the Ellsworth City Council, the 12-16-2019 regular council meeting.
Mr. Chairman, move approval. Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Item number five, City Manager's Report.
Mr. Chairman, given the meetings a week early and we just got through the holidays, I actually have nothing new to report. However, I'm sure there'll be many things next month's meeting.
Okay. Item number six, Committee Reports. This is an opportunity for any councilors who have participated in committee meetings to provide an update. Ms. Councilor.
I was at the Recreation Committee. Todd Wagstaff, a retired Councilman Gary Fortier, gave a presentation concerning the lights at De Meyer Field, and they'd like to have them replaced, put up there. The original quote that they got was from Musco Lighting for $150,000, and that was equipment only with no labor. Since then, they've talked to Gilman Electric, and they can supply the same equipment at cost for $80,000. The total cost with labor and everything should come in around $100,000. They discussed where the money would come from to pay for the lights, and they have grants and a request from the city and fundraising. Janet Richards also suggested setting up a fund for the upkeep of the lighting system. The committee voted to go ahead with the project, but they'd like to see more solid numbers on the project. And then City Manager Cole was also there, and he discussed the future of parades and all recreation activities in the city coming up, upcoming. He decided that it would be good for all requests for recreation to come to Recreation Committee, and that the Recreation Committee would take over the parades, and that the Recreation Committee and the Heart of Ellsworth, we're going to have a meeting today, but one person was ill, so that didn't happen. But that's going to happen in the future. And there was also the copy of the parade ordinance was given to all the members, and they'll review it and make suggestions concerning updating it at the next meeting.
That's it. Thank you. Counsel Mark.
I attended the Harbor Commission meeting on the eighth, and I think we all in the Commission want to give a big round of thanks to Ron Fortier, who's been a huge help at the harbor over the years. And most recently, he's been down there checking the wiring at the slips and fixing some of the cords in the ice eaters. So I want to thank you, Ron Fortier. The Harbor Master reports that they're keeping an eye on the ice eaters and looking toward maybe repositioning a couple of them as needed. We've received an update on our attempts to get some badly needed dredging done, which is opposite the first buoy that you encounter if you're coming into the river. At low tide, it's oftentimes less than a foot of clearance, and on moon tides, sometimes the buoy is just laying on the mud flats. So it desperately needs to be done. And so we did get this update. The big issue is what to do with the soil that's dredged up, which very possibly could be contaminated. And one thing is for sure, that you can't dump it on the shore anywhere. So they're going to have to figure out what can be done from there. And then they also want to do kind of a survey of the ocean bottom to see what the depth is from the ocean floor to bedrock. They're looking to find a place where maybe they can safely dump the dredging material that comes out. So it's, nothing's been finalized yet. The fuel tank replacement plan is still on track for a spring replacement, which is nice. And it was reminded that the new hours for the Harbor Master next year will be from nine o'clock in the morning until six o'clock at night, moving everything up an hour to accommodate people coming in and wanting to gas up later in the afternoon. They also talked about the budget and things like that, but nothing exact yet.
Thank you. Any other councilors? All right. Move on to item seven, Citizens' Comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address any issue that they'd like. Just come up to the podium, state your name, and then the floor is yours.
I wanted to be first. My name is Jo Cooper, and I'm the Executive Director of Friends in Action. And first of all, I'm just here to update the council, especially the new councilors, on our senior playground or adult exercise area project that's going to be in Nolton Park. And so first of all, I, it's a pretty exciting project, but I want to thank the city so much for helping us to write a grant where we got matching funds to match funds that Friends in Action, through our volunteers, through some matching grants, had raised for this project. I got very excited about the concept, what it is, and I believe you have a packet. We tried to make sure you all had copies so you can actually see visuals of what it will look like approximately. It's outdoor exercise equipment, available year-round. They're called it Senior Playgrounds because they're for adults to exercise outdoors. We formed a committee. We, first of all, we raised some money that we, for a challenge grant, and we raised about $4,000 to match a $4,000 grant approximately to begin with. And it just built from there with the thanks of our volunteers and some other matching grants, a small grant from Rotary and that kind of thing. We've raised $40,000 toward this project to match the grant from the state for putting this in. It will have a number of items here that you'll see in the schematic, which includes a variety of exercises, trying to target different areas of, physically of the body and for all ages. It includes access for people who are in a wheelchair. There's an arm exercise. There's a lateral pull-down that you can be in a wheelchair. There is a recumbent bike and an upright bike, some things that you kind of turn and twist that are called Tai Chi spinners, a thing that's called a cross-country ski, which is for two people, which is sort of like an elliptical, and another thing here, and plus a swing set. And in the schematic, it does say this isn't recommended by the company that we're getting most of this from. It's simply because they don't produce that item, and the committee is getting proposals from other companies for the swing set. There will also be some outdoor tables where you can play games such as checkers or cards, and there'll be some benches that are being moved around. It's all placed near where the pergola is, and this has taken us a while to determine because of the restrictions on Nolton Park. And I'm sure people might have questions, but I just wanted you to be aware. It's a pretty exciting project. It's taken us a number of years to get to this point because, mostly because of raising the money, and then also because of some of the delays and the grants and the red tape. So, does anybody have any questions or anything I could answer on? Tom, do you feel like I covered the gist of it?
You did a super job.
I have a volunteer who's keeping this on track.
Joe, there were nine pieces of equipment.
There are.
What I see here in the photo?
Yes, that's what's going to be there, yep. We've had various iterations of what the equipment would be, but depending on the, and this is what we've finalized it, we're trying, you know, staying within the available space and having it so that it doesn't get too cluttered and that kind of thing.
Counsel Kaplan.
As a healthcare provider, I'm always, always, always telling patients that diet and exercise, diet and exercise, I'm off the hook if I say that. But it's exciting, it really is, to have something like this that the community can use.
Yes.
And it's right across, almost right across from the Elder Care Center.
Right.
This is exciting.
It's a variety of people that will be, it'll be so accessible, whether you're coming into town as a visitor, and believe me, these are all over the country. They really do garner a lot of positive. We are hoping that the placement would be where adults who are maybe bringing their children or grandchildren could also have activity but not be too far away from them for people that might be working out at the Y and running through, to people from our center and some of our classes using it, the housing that's right at the park. It's just, it's a wonderful, we feel very lucky to be able to put it there.
My husband and I used to own a property in Florida, and there was one of these outdoor facilities there, and when our son was younger, we used to take him to the park, and while he was playing on the swings, we'd watch him on the swings, but we could use equipment.
Right.
And that was, we thought, this is great, why don't we have anything like this locally? And now you're presenting this, and it's really exciting.
It's also, what I'm excited about too, is that it's really for people of all abilities because the wheelchair access is super important. We have one member of the committee who's actually in a power chair and a member who lives at Seaport Village. She is very impatient to get this in place, so it's going to be, I think, a great benefit to people. So I just wanted you to hear that we are making progress and we're pretty excited about it, and also to thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name's Amy Reisman, and I live here downtown in Ellsworth. And I'm here tonight, I just wanted to voice a concern that I have about some of the intersections, primarily the one right down by the bridge. I don't think it's very pedestrian-friendly down there. I timed the light to be at about three seconds, but I reached out to Chief Moser to get, you know, the accurate information on how that light works, and he got the information for me from Mr. Ingalls, and he said that the white walking sign is about four seconds with 18 seconds of blinking lights after it. And I think it's a little bit less than that, but even if it is that, the traffic that turns from Water Street to the bridge is not aware that you get the go-ahead to walk. I don't think they're aware of it. I've waited, crossing both ways. When you get the white light to go, there are still cars taking turns, and they don't, they don't stop, and they don't expect you to be there. And I think that's a safety issue. I was concerned about it, and I was just wondering if there were any plans to address that.
We've had SABAGO technics look at the light and different timing plans for a variety of reasons, because obviously you can only allow so much traffic through, conflicting uses of all, including pedestrians. And I would say that there are some options on the table. Not quite ready to go there yet, but I'd be glad to personally chat with you about this as well. Clearly, that intersection isn't as pedestrian-friendly as it could be, but that requires investment and also requires upgrades and, you know, good data and stuff. But your concerns understood.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that. Appreciate it. Counsel Kaplan.
I think that you and I had discussed some, Mr. Batson taking a look at that particular intersection for its user-friendly status.
Yes.
And it would be agreed that there's a definite traffic issue at that intersection, and when you add in pedestrian traffic and safety, it most certainly does need to be looked at.
Just add that we are looking at the options. We have Bruce Mattson's, the Regional Traffic Engineer, just for the public, from Maine DOT, who happens to live in Surrey. We're looking at those options, and we also looked at the cost of upgrading it to make it more pedestrian-friendly, and it's, you know, it's not inexpensive, but those are all things that need to be looked at for sure.
I'm John Stein. I live over on Franklin Street, just downtown here. I'm here as a board member for Heart of Ellsworth and also as an owner of Fogtown Brewing Company. I was asked six months ago to return in six months by the City Council, specifically former Councilmember Fortier, to give an update. There were some issues regarding Elm Street, which is the city street just north of Fogtown, as well as some noise levels, and concerns regarding our events, so I thought I'd give you a brief update on our events and Elm Street, things like that. First, congratulations to the new councilmembers, Kaplan and Councilmember, ah, Miller, yes. And congratulations on your chairmanship. Good to see you all. So we recently had our second birthday party at Fogtown, which was fun and exciting. We, since meeting six months ago, got our solar equipment up and running on our roof. We're now 72% solar efficient, 72% of our electricity is coming from the sun, which is awesome. One of our brewers was able to buy a house in Ellsworth, so we're just increasing young people, and that's really exciting for us as well. We've had over 25 events for live music in our establishment, as well as 10 to 15 more fundraiser events for nonprofits and local charities who raise several thousand dollars, but mostly awareness about these charities and fundraisers, which is very important to all of us here. We've had no official complaints from neighbors, but we've had some communication via email with some of the neighbors in our group, just requiring information about when we were going to have events so that they might put up signs requesting that people not necessarily park in front of their houses on Elm Street. I wanted to thank the city for getting some new parking signs up on Elm Street. It's been really helpful. It was fairly confusing before. If you remember, people might have parked on either side, east or west of Elm Street, and now they're only parking on the one side, mostly facing the correct direction when they park, but we're working on that. So constant vigilance from us and from the neighbors in helping to keep that street safe and parking-friendly. We are currently under, following all ordinances for code and fire and noise. We had Mr. Silman come by from code with a decibel meter to check out a couple of different areas. And once we finished building a little hut around one of our outdoor compressors, he okayed that for city noise ordinance. And yeah, we're happy to be in Ellsworth and happy to be here tonight. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
I definitely appreciate you coming back. Obviously, this time of year, your doors are closed, unlike in the summer, and one of those concerns that we heard about the noise. And just as you get, as we approach spring, maybe it will be a time to have another meeting, put it on the agenda, to be able to see, hear the voices from the surrounding area, and maybe by then you will have had a community meeting, and it will be completely resolved for that time of year. But definitely appreciate you coming back in.
Yep, happy to meet again, whether it's here or at our place or one of the neighbors, wherever it is. Thank you.
Yeah, maybe we need to go.
Yeah, I think we should.
Yeah, sure. Some refreshments perhaps.
Would anyone else like to speak? So I would just like to take a minute on this agenda, just to, I wanted to make a correction and an apology to Chief Tupper. I contacted him the day after our last meeting. Last meeting, I had raised the point and the concern about the fact that in the capital budget, the tanker was not put into the capital budget when we asked for it. The document I was looking at was a previous version. That was my error, and so I just wanted, so I called Chief Tupper the next day and let the council know that that was my error. I don't want to make public statements that are incorrect, and I certainly want to correct them publicly when I do. So I just want to extend that apology to you in public so that people know that you did do what we had requested and apologized for that error. All right. Item number eight, Presentation of Awards. We will get with Mr. Harris next month. He's coaching at the moment. And would also just like the public to be aware of, in between the November council meeting and the, and prior to the December council meeting, there was a proclamation that I presented to Health Equity Alliance, and I just wanted, again, to make the public aware of it. It was recognition of World AIDS Day. I'm not going to read the whole proclamation, but I just wanted to say a couple of things. HIV infection and AIDS continues to be a major health concern, with approximately 1,800 people living with HIV in Maine, more than 1 million in the United States, and an estimated 37 million worldwide. And that the proclamation really is just a recognition that we all need to continue to do diligence, provide support, education, and awareness to address this particular health concern. So that was presented to the Health Equity Alliance back in December. All right. Item number nine, Unfinished Business. Council Order Number 121901, Request of the Public Works Director to Authorize Payment for Motor Repairs to Highway 2009 International Plow Truck Number 34, which was tabled at the December 16, 2019 regular council meeting.
Good evening, councilors. Lisa Sekulic, Public Works Director. First, I want to apologize for not being here last month. I was quite ill, so thankfully David and Tammy and Bernie helped me out on that one. Some of, but I did watch the meeting, and I think we have answered most of your questions, but if you have some, please feel free to ask. I know one of the questions had to do with hourly rates. We did some research and looked at a bunch of other franchise dealers throughout the state, and it turns out that the 105 that Caldwell charges us is almost significantly less than most of the other big truck dealerships in the area. Some of those are ranging from $110 to $136 an hour. So 105 is well within the reasonable amount for an hourly rate. And then if you saw David's memo, hopefully, we, Bernie, David and I met with Mr. Caldwell at his office to discuss kind of procedure and what had happened and just thinking, and I think it came out well. He acknowledged that we had been asking for quotes and that we didn't get them, per se. He said that he would, we had the conversation that in the future, we were definitely going to require those upfront, even if it is a rough slash high estimate. We'd rather know the bigger picture than the, rather be on the safe side of things in the future. So I think it went well. So I think I'm still here to request to pay for the work. The work was done. It's a truck that we need. So that's where we're at.
Councilors.
It sounds as though you had a pretty good dialogue with.
It was a very good conversation, yes.
And it is a little comforting to know that the local company is more than competitive price-wise.
Yep.
I could add, we also, at our management team meeting last week, reinforced the fact of expressing to vendors that they need to get us estimates or preauthorization before they proceed with work, so we're going to tighten up on our end as well. And I would also add, I heard from both the Fire Department and the Highway Department that Mr. Caldwell is known to come out at night to get trucks going again, and he is local and has had a long-term relationship. And he did acknowledge to us that he had, he had said he would get an estimate, and he didn't. So he understands the need.
Counsel Blount.
Mr. Chairman, I would move approval of payment of $23,360 to Caldwell Diesel.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? All those abstention? One abstention, motion passes.
Thank you.
Item number 10, Public Hearing in Action on Enacting Ellsworth Code of Ordinances, Chapter 62, Taxation of Time Share Estates Ordinance, which was tabled at the December 16, 2019 regular council meeting. A public hearing was held at that time.
Good evening. Jim Killam, Acadia Village Resort. I don't really have anything else more to say, but if anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Counsel Kaplan.
Have we looked yet at adjusting the rates that they are being taxed?
Good evening. Larry Gardner, City Assessor. And I haven't had the time to actually look into that finalized value. I have been working on it, but it's going to take me probably a month or two to actually come into a final determination.
So one thing that I would, I'd just like to put on the record is that, because it didn't come up last time, is that what we're discussing here is consistent with state statute, which is titled 33, Chapter 10A, which talks about collection and receipt of money for taxes and tax bills. This is all, this section's related to time shares, and it talks about the fact that municipalities, by issuing an ordinance, that this is a proper way to, for the collection of the taxes for time-share units. So I just thought it was important, and it talks about the escrow account, and also the understanding that the managing entities have the ability to not only place liens on those weeks for taxes that aren't being paid, but you also have the ability to recoup that in the sale, when you sell those units or rent those units going forward, so there's an ability, there's a mechanism built into the state statute that allows for recoupment of that, which is not available for the city when the city takes, forecloses, and takes possession of a unit. So just wanted to put that on the record, that that exists, and did not come up at the last meeting. Counsel Kaplan.
One of the things that one of the time-share owners had pointed out was that each day. One of the things that one of the timeshare owners had pointed out was that each deed is taxed individually by the week and that one particular property, if it was a, if it was a single family residence anywhere else, would have been taxed at about 2,500, but because it's part of a timeshare, it's taxed individually by the week on each individual deed that that owner has, thus doubling, if not tripling, the tax. And I don't know if that's really fair for these taxpayers. And so I don't know if we're going to be looking at how that is done. And is it really fair and, and just to tax the property based on its use as opposed to its actual value?
One of the, that's of course, it's a statistic, but the median, median home value here in Ellsworth is 175,000. So that would be per week, if you break it down to a week, would be $63. The, the median timeshare is $67 for that week. So that it's, the timeshare week is a little higher, but they're pretty close.
One gentleman last week had stated that his taxes, or if you added up the taxes for that particular unit by the year, it wound up being about close to $5,000, he had pointed out. And I just thought, wow.
Yeah, if you use any one person's tax for their timeshare, times 52 would not be what we have because the, the ranges are from $33 tax per week to $133 per week for the, for the nicer weeks, July.
So explain this to me like I'm a two-year-old, okay? My house has a set value. It doesn't change by the year or by the week. It doesn't change whether I own my home in December or I own my home in July. But because it's a timeshare, it changes the value of a property that's already existing in Ellsworth.
Yeah, there's in-season.
It's a standing structure and a standing piece of land. So why does it change?
There's in-season weeks and off-season weeks. There's weeks that are for holidays. Summer weeks would sell for more than non-summer weeks here in Maine.
But the use is the same, isn't it? It's a res, it's like a res, it's not residential, but it's a timeshare. I guess I'm looking at the structure as a specific value. If it was sold, if, if somebody took the entire property and sold it to an outside company who said, okay, we'll sell this office apartments that people can live in year round, it would have a set value.
Or a lodging facility.
But it would still have a set value.
Yeah, it would, but we, we can't value it as a one set value.
Manager Cole.
I was just going to make the point that it's more akin in my mind to a hotel and hotel room prices. Price of a hotel room in July is very different than January because they're, in a way, income properties and this is as well. That's probably a better comparison, isn't it?
Yeah. And, and, and these things, you, those are good questions and it's very good reasoning and it's something I am looking at and comparing to as I analyze these so that, so that it does have a comparison to apartment buildings, to lodging facilities. If, if this, what, what I'll be doing is looking at, almost hypothetically, looking at it as if it was not a timeshare and what its value would be and then comparing that to where we're at.
I just think that it would make more sense to look at it as a sole unit, as a, as a destination, as a sole unit and divide the taxes equally amongst all of the owners based on their ownership rather than the week in which they own. Because if they own a three-bedroom, it's not going to change whether they have a three-bedroom in December or a three-bedroom in July. It's still a three-bedroom. And so I would think that the property as a whole has a set value, just like my house has a set value, whether it's my house in December or my house in July, and then divide those taxes equally amongst the, the deed owners. Does that make sense?
It, it does make sense. And one of the things we have to do is look at, certainly back when these things first sold, the, the ranges of sales were determined based on what, what week it was, whether it was an in-season week or an off-season week. And they had different values based on the time of the year and that's the way they sold. And, and that's how they were analyzed and that's what's been brought forward to the state. There has been reductions in value since the very beginning through the years. But yeah, that's something I'm looking at.
Counsel Moore.
I, I think there's another side to this. I hope I'm not wrong. It would seem that if the prices were equal throughout, you might have a very difficult time selling a number of weeks in the, in the winter and, and other times, which would mean that, well, it would be bad for the, for the business.
Yeah.
I think you do have to look at it like, like the hotel system and so forth.
Yeah. And these do rent too. You know, if you have a summer week and you care not to go there and use it that week, you can rent it and, and the rent for that week is going to be a lot more than the off-season week. So it, these can produce income, or one single week can produce income.
The, the valuations, I think, are pretty accurately reflected in the time period where there was a sales and marketing company doing sales at the timeshare. Sale prices ranged from 4,000 to 15,000. That company closed its doors in 2009. I, I'm, I've been there since 2004 or '05 and I don't think there has been a sale in that 15 years more than $3,000 of a summer week every year. But I don't think we have any property assessed less than $3,000. So looking at 15 years' worth of sales history, how can you justify that? And I, and I think the, I think Larry has an option of assessing it as a timeshare week by week by week, or he can look at it as an individual building. I believe, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, it's his call how he assesses it.
So I think the, I think it's a, it's a good point that Counsel Kaplan raises around the valuation component and it might factor into the timeline that we might consider if we're, if we consider the ordinance in terms of timing that valuation of the property with the ordinance. The ordinance itself that we're discussing isn't about the evaluation process or the valuation of the property itself. It's more about the mechanism of how the taxes are collected and paid to the city. And, and there's obviously that connection. So I, I would say that that's something that, that I think we probably want to consider to make sure that the property is valued, that we're comfortable with that process. But as far as the ordinance that's in front of us really is dealing with the mechanism in terms of having the managing entity taking responsibility to establish an escrow, collecting that from the owners of the timeshare units, timeshare weeks, and then distributing that out to the city annually.
I, I agree with what you're saying. I understand that, but I think it would be causing a lot of financial stress on the property if this ordinance was enacted before the value is reflected a fair value. And that's, that's the point I'm trying to make. I'm not against taking over that part. I don't have a say in the matter. That's entirely up to the city council, but I just want it to be fair if and when we do take it over. That's all I'm asking.
No, and I think we're saying the same thing on that point. What, what I meant by my statement was that if we as a council, if we were to pass this ordinance, to pass it for, to go into effect at a future date, to provide sufficient time for that valuation process to be concluded, that's what I was suggesting, similar to what you're saying.
I'm Rusty Wainworth. I'm the president of the Homeowners Association. I can tell you right now that the timeshare is, you know, financially, we're not that well off down there. I don't care what anybody says. If you pass this ordinance as is, it's a direct line to bankruptcy for us. I can tell you that right now. You guys can't collect the taxes, but you expect us to pay for taxes that, that we can't collect either. It's just, it's very, very unfair to us. A lot of your problem is, you know, again, is evaluation. And you guys know what they're worth. I mean, you guys record the deeds every week. You know what they sold for in the past five years, the past 10 years. A lot of them have sold from the one in the $200 area. Now, I'm not for putting a tax value on them at that. I think that's ridiculous. But if you sell one for $100 and then you tax it at four, that's ridiculous as well. You know, that's, that's where we're hurting here. I've been trying to get them, I've been talking to Larry often, oh, when I, when I pay my taxes and I complain about it all the time because it's too high for what I, what I own. If the worst thing, worst-case scenario comes in and you pass this when we don't do anything with the valuations, I can really foresee down the road that, you know, City Ellsworth might own a timeshare, but I doubt that because I think the bank will come in and take it first. And then there'll be a landlord in there and he'll be renting apartments. Right now there's 39 units, there's 15 of them that can be cut in two for the lock-offs. So now you're, you know, 60 units down there that somebody's going to rent. You don't think there's going to be some kids come out of there, go to school? That's going to be something costly. Right now, there's no kids that come out of that place. So you've got a very, a lot of tax income down there and they're asking very minimal services from the town. I would really, really like to see these come down to a, a fair market value. That's, that's the key. But as far as collecting the taxes, you people hire the professionals right out here. They have the, they have the state programs, they have the, they have the professionalism to, you know, to collect the taxes. That's not our wheelhouse at all. Your city manager, I believe part of his job description is tax collector. We are not tax collectors. And if you, if you make us do that and then pay for the ones that we can't collect as well as you can't collect, it's very, very detrimental to the finances of the, of the timeshare down there. And we are a very large economic engine to this area and I've seen on TV a number of times how Ellsworth is promoting small business. I beg of you, do not kill ours and it will. It's a very, very detrimental to us. So I didn't answer any questions that you have, but I mean, I'm just a, you know, I'm just a fanboy from Charleston, but that's the way I see it right there. I mean, I bought in when John Walker was down there. I paid the long dollar for it. I paid over $4,000 for my week 24, uh, week 48. Anybody want to give me $500 for it tonight, I'll sell it, you know? That's all they're worth. So how can you tax them for any more?
So Manager Cole, I guess, I want to ask you a question. The, the state statute states something different, which my understanding was along this line in terms of the ordinance that we're enacting, which states that, so prior, so there's an escrow that gets established and the managing entity shall pay to the municipal tax collector all money deposited in the escrow account for the purpose of tax payment. If the amount paid from the escrow account is not sufficient to discharge all taxes and tax-related costs due and owing, the managing entity shall place a lien on those timeshare estates whose owners have not contributed to the escrow account as provided in Section 594 and pay the outstanding amount no later than 30 days after the date it has collected the taxes and costs from the delinquent owner or has foreclosed the lien and sold the timeshare estate to a new owner. So to me, that is not what you're talking about in terms of the entity itself is not paying the full taxes, you're paying it when it's collected. And so I guess I have a question about the ordinance that we're putting forward. Is that what is contained in what we've been looking at?
My understanding, and I'll defer to the deputy city manager if I'm incorrect, my understanding was that the managing entity was responsible for making the city whole. Is that correct? And that's, that was a direct question for me to our city attorney. I wanted that to be clear and that was his clear opinion of it. So I'd also add the fact that our understanding is there are any other timeshare situations just like this where the taxes are collected in that fashion. It's the managing entity's responsibility to, to collect, collect the taxes from their members. So this would not be unusual.
There are many timeshares in the world and they all, I say all, and there's many different ways that the, that the taxes are collected. I mean, this one here works, it worked well for a long time for the City Ellsworth. It worked well for us. The problem is, is you, you know, is your, your tax collector doesn't want to collect the taxes. I mean, he wants to take that part of his job and push it on to somebody else, as he says, to make the city whole. To make the city whole, that means we're going to pay the taxes for people who do not pay their taxes. For the city to foreclose on a, on a timeshare, I mean, it's a matter of a couple of registered letters and a, and a signature and you own it. I don't know that, you know, the timeshare can do that. I mean, small claims court, you know, requires time to go to court, do the paperwork, do the filing and all that, where the city does it with a stroke of a pen. I mean, it's just, it's putting a lot of work, you know, onto, onto our minimum wage front desk people down there and that's just what it is.
Counsel Miller.
So it's still unclear. The ordinance you read, will that not be in effect? Will they still have to pay the taxes according to the proposal that we have?
That's not clear. And I could not, I might not be reading it completely from a legal perspective, so that's why I raised the question.
Yeah, I'm still not clear.
Deputy city manager, anything to add to this? That was our understanding from our discussion with the attorney.
Right. And like you said, that we did ask them specifically if taxes were not collected by an escrow, it was still the responsibility of the managing entity to pay those taxes. So every single tax bill that we issued would have a zero balance.
Perhaps the city assessor could comment as well on your understanding.
Yeah, I think we, we've had perhaps 50 timeshare foreclosures this year.
Forty-three.
Forty-three. Well, I used the figure of 50 here. Usually the foreclosures are the, the worst weeks. And the median value of, of our foreclosed weeks that we do have is $2,300. So that would, that the weekly tax is $43.26. So if you multiply $43.26 times 50 weeks, that's $2,163 for all of them. So, so the cost is not really going to be paying the taxes for these units that are foreclosed on. It's going to be the extra administration for collecting the tax.
And we can certainly get clarification from legal counsel on this matter, but I remember explicitly asking, and I believe the deputy city manager was there as well, and I believe that's why the timeshare association's concerned, because they believe they're going to have to make up for these other units.
One other thing I heard the chairman speak about was, you know, the rental of them and whatnot, sales. We are in the process of, of a rental and sales agreement with the city, where I understand. And it's almost complete. That'll work great. I mean, let us, let us sell the timeshares. We, we can do that. Somebody who calls the city and not to run down any of your people here, what they really don't know, the ins and outs of a timeshare, they're not salesmen. They can't sell them. We have a couple of girls that work for us that do a very, very good job at that. And I think this agreement will work well between the city and the timeshares. But what I'd like to see, which I wholeheartedly love that agreement, but I'd like to see this ordinance go away for a number of years because it's not good for anybody, and have your tax assessor work with my manager down there on some reasonable values for these units. I mean, you guys are talking, you know, a little bit tax, it's only this, it's only this. You've got to understand that from our point of view, it's cost of ownership down there. That includes buying the unit, the maintenance fees and whatnot, and the dues to InterVille International. For us to be successful, we have got to keep a low cost of ownership. And that's what it's all about. And if I can, I say "I." If the timeshare can get to, you know, 90% ownership, hey, things are going to look a whole lot different. You guys won't be repossessing them, and, you know, the values may go out. But as it is right now, this ordinance you're looking at is very detrimental to us. And I'd like to see it go away. Let these two gentlemen here work on some tax values that your board and our board can get on board with and see if we can work together and, you know, make that timeshare, you know, what it can be. And keep in mind, it is a large economic engine to this area. You bring, you know, 50 families in there on the weekend that don't live here. They spend a lot of money while they're here. So I need to see that go away.
Counsel Blatchett.
If it went away for one year, to July 1st, 2021, would that give everyone enough time to get up to speed on this?
If what, the ordinance went away?
Yeah, the implementation of it.
I don't believe so unless the valuations come in where they need to be. We need to get a higher percentage of ownership if you're going to expect us to pay taxes on money that we can't collect.
But those taxes amount to, is it $2,300, Larry? Give or take?
Or 50 foreclosed units.
And it was 43 this year.
It's the extra administrative cost. You have to perhaps hire somebody.
Yeah, see, and then he's talking us hiring somebody, where you guys have already got the trained girls out here. I say girls, I'm just smizing, the trained personnel to do that. I mean, you've already got the computer system. You've got everything. Collecting taxes is your profession. It's what you do.
Counsel Kaplan.
Is there any reason why we can't wipe the state slate clean? We haven't collected the taxes. We've foreclosed on these units. We've had them for years. We haven't gotten off square one. Is there any reason that the slate cannot be wiped clean with an abatement and start fresh before the ordinance and allow the assessor time to reassess these values with a fresh start?
I guess I don't understand what you mean, wipe the slate clean. I believe that you guys are still holding on to timeshares from John Walker, who was the developer, multimillionaire, went bankrupt on this. You know, and they've never been sold, 20 years, never been sold. And you guys are still sitting on them.
I don't remember what the system was like when it first opened, before we got into this situation that we're in today. It was more like, I guess, what we thought was the traditional way that the city interacted with the timeshare business. But I'm wondering, to kind of build on what you said, if you had a year or so to enable Mr. Gardner and your people to sit down and try to work out some kind of a plan. And if I understood correctly what you're talking about with wipe the slate clean, in other words, give them all the deeds that we have now?
And an abatement for the back taxes.
So we just recently, and I think it was before you were elected, that the timeshare ordinance did change. So once a property, a timeshare forecloses, all the taxes are written off. So it has a zero balance to begin with.
So they're clean slated already?
So let me just pause the conversation for a second to check with the counselors in terms of where we stand with the ordinance. Is there, does anyone have a motion for us to consider to continue the discussion? Are we at that point? Well, I'm wondering, we have an ordinance that's on the table that we're discussing. And that's what this agenda item is for. So the discussion at this point is related to that ordinance. And I wanted to check in to see if we, if anybody, if any of the counselors were at a point to make a motion on that. And obviously, if we go forward, then we can continue the discussion. But I wanted to see where we were with that.
I would like to go forward with it. No, go ahead. I fully understand that passing ordinance is room to tweak it if it needs to be tweaked. But I'd like to at least get it on the books and explore where we can go with this.
Counsel Blatchett.
And in continuing that thought of Counsel Moore, I agree with that. And I would make the motion to delay the implementation until July 1st, 2021, first day of the '22 fiscal year.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. Is the public hearing still going on?
The public hearing was last meeting. This was tabled for the council's discussion. So we held a public meeting last meeting. We carried on the agenda item for the council to make a decision on the ordinance. So the public meeting took place. Public meeting portion was closed. And we're continuing our discussion as a council on the matter.
You still open the public comment?
If there are, let me deal with the motion at hand, and we'll go from there. So currently, the motion on the table in terms of to move forward with the ordinance within effective date of July 1st, 2021.
Correct.
Is there a second?
I would second that.
We have a motion and a second. So now further discussion.
Well, I think we've kind of summed it up that, like many things, I don't think we have a vision of what the final outcome is going to be. I think we need to have further discussions. We've got the, sort of like an outline in place. But I think there needs to be cooperative efforts on our part and on their part to see what can work and what won't work.
I agree with John. And I'd like to not move forward with passing the ordinance at this time and put it off maybe to vote again on it next year. But I am not for passing it right now at this time, the way it is.
Counsel Brendon.
I'm in agreement with Counselor Miller. Based on the state statute and then how we have it written, I don't think it's fair to ask other owners to contribute to the portion that can't be paid by other, by certain leaseholders. So I think we need to get clarification on that before we move forward with this ordinance. And then also figure out the administrative piece.
Counsel Blatchett.
By getting this ordinance on the books now, it gives us about 17 months to hash this out in talks with the resort and do any, I believe the word Counsel Moore you used was tweaking in that time. And 17 months can, we can do a lot of tweaking, if necessary, in the talks with them and discussion with Larry.
Counsel Kaplan.
Again, it's, as you said, giving 17 months to look at the actual values and whether or not they're being taxed fairly based upon a previous value versus the current value. If we've had them for sale for $100 and we haven't been able to sell them for $100, and they're being taxed at, you said, $4,000?
Yep.
I think that we would definitely need to take a look at that aspect of it and tax them fairly.
So I would say in terms of the public, if there is a comment that was not made during the public hearing, I would allow a brief comment to be made. If the point's been made, I would ask you to defer.
Louis Seerway, McDonald Avenue. I did speak last month. I was very long in my talk. It took about eight or nine minutes, too much of your time. So I prepared my remarks for tonight in three and a half minutes. So I'll skip the ones that we talked about last month and go right to the ones that are new. The city's fiscal year 2018 annual report lists 850 real estate property tax liens, totaling $1,270,000, plus 260 personal property tax liens, personal property, totaling $140,000. This proposed ordinance addresses only a very small portion or percentage of the total unpaid taxes in the city of Ellsworth. This proposed ordinance requires Acadia Village Resort to do several things to make up the difference between the taxes collected and the taxes that are owed. It requires AVR to place liens on timeshare owners' units who do not pay their taxes. It provides the city with reports of who has or has not paid their taxes. It requires AVR to establish and maintain an escrow account in the name of AVR and the city. It requires or will require AVR to increase staffing levels and the operating costs to meet these new requirements. It requires AVR to pay the city $5 plus certified mail for sending each notice to AVR. The proposed ordinance does not require the city to pay any fee for the billing and the collection and the monitoring and the remittance of taxes to the city. They get no fee. It does not require AVR personnel to be bonded to protect taxpayer funds from misuse, misappropriation, or embezzlement. The proposed ordinance reassigns a considerable amount of work from city staff to AVR staff. It only stands to reason that a reduction in city staff should be expected if this ordinance is passed. You won't need as much staff. There are 61 ordinances on the website, ordinances and codes, with six being repealed and one expired. This proposed ordinance would be number 62 and would provide all the benefits. All the benefits go to the city. No benefits go to Acadia Village Resort, none. The city is the most beneficiary of this ordinance. The proposed ordinance defines a small subset of all the taxpayers in the city of Ellsworth and treats them differently, very differently. And I, for one, am tired of being treated differently. I don't want to pay somebody else's taxes. I will pay mine. But I don't want to pay someone else's. So in my view, this ordinance is a punitive action on the timeshare owners and Acadia Village Resort, inflicting great harm on their business. And I strongly recommend this proposed ordinance be rejected. Thank you very much.
Counsel Kaplan.
I own a timeshare, not, obviously, not an Acadia Village, but I own a timeshare.
We'll sell you one.
My property taxes are included when I get my bill for my annual maintenance fee and for my property taxes. It's kind of one bill. It divides it up. Is there a reason that AVR cannot do this?
Okay, so just, I appreciate the question, but I do want, because we have a motion and a second on the table, and we're dealing with that, I did want to give the public an opportunity since you came here to share your opinion. But I don't want to open it up for larger discussion. I think we need to have that discussion in terms of the pending motion. So I ask us to focus on that.
Do you guys vote?
At this point, no. Now we need to deal with the motion on the table. Counsel Moore.
When we began talking about this, I can't speak for the others, but I had no idea that it was going to be this complicated kind of neophyte in this area. Perhaps we do need to step back and spend some time having people exchange views and come up with something that can benefit both entities, the city, without damaging the lifestyle and the bank accounts of the people who are owners of timeshares.
Counsel Phillips.
And as we sit here and debate this, I think one aspect we're losing, that this is a business we're talking about. And it's an unusual business that sells basically air. You know, you've got a time and a place. This building's there in existence. But what we're selling today, selling to the individual is kind of a non-existent product. And through whoever devised it years ago, came up with this great idea and the difference in valuation in weeks. And then it ends up with taxing everybody. And it is a different and a unique thing, but it is an operating business. And as far as the business having to pay the taxes for those that do not pay, that's actually what happens when the city of Ellsworth doesn't collect. That all falls to all the taxpayers, not just those that created the problem in your business. When we don't get paid, the funds come from everybody that writes a tax check. It all comes, it's made up from everybody else. It's spread. And with this being left at there, they're saying, well, it's unfair to us. But you are the business. You are in existence. You are creating that. And it's part of those people that are part of your business that aren't paying the bills too. So that's, they're covering, would be covering, if however it's done, their share of what's actually created. As far as the value issue, that's a whole separate thing, which we've been debating for hours and hours. That's between Mr. Gardner and the owners and the organization. We can't dictate what he does, and that ends up going a different process. We may not agree with both sides of it, but that's really nothing we can do anything with here. It's not an prerogative. Whether this thing, I don't think if we do it, it should be done immediately. I would agree with Mark and Michelle that we should at least extend it a year. There are some other questions, especially where you read in the ordinance that they aren't responsible for the taxes that aren't collected. Was that addressed when our attorney set it up? There are some questions there. We don't need to do it now. Shouldn't we just remove this thing from the thing? You want to vote on the exact, on his?
We have a motion.
We have the motion. We're going to vote on that motion. That's correct. And whether it passes or not, then we'll just remove it and let it set and further, rather than bring this back for another two-hour debate next year, next week.
Excuse me. Any other comments? Excuse me. Any other comments? All right. We have the motion. All those in favor of passing, excuse me? Passing the motion, do you want to restate it so, because I can't. See, this is complicated. Choke me on it.
The motion is to enact the ordinance but delay enforcement of it until July 1st, 2021.
That's the motion. All those in favor of that motion? One. All those opposed? Two, three, four, five opposed. All those abstention? One abstention. Motion fails. So with that said, the, the motion fails, and unless there's any other action at a future time, it does not automatically come back onto, this will not be addressed next until it's approached by the council. Counsel Moore.
I would still like to see over the next year, year and a half, an attempt made by people from the city office and Acadian Village sit down and try to work something out because it's, we didn't just capriciously bring this thing to life. It's something that we've been concerned about for a while. We feared that it's our business to collect taxes and that we have all these people. But the fact of the matter is, it does take a gigantic amount of time to take care of it. So I would like to think that we will set up some kind of a schedule of meetings to try to work towards some kind of a common goal.
And I think, Mr. Call.
And certainly, the master lease agreement the council passed at the last meeting means that we are now in a fuller partnership with Acadian Village Resorts. Try to move those three hundred stranded units. That, as the deputy city manager says, the slate's all clean on those units. Those tax, there are no taxes until we get them back onto the market. The other thing I would say, too, is that in deference to the city assessor, it will take time to do this with twenty-eight hundred weeks of varying sorts, and some are half weeks and other things. It's going to take time to get the arms around it and try to figure it out. But I know the assessor's going to move diligently on this as well, and we will report back. And finally, we can also get clarification from the city attorney, perhaps have him come when you want to bring this up again, because it is very complicated. Tax collection is not my forte. It's the deputy city manager's, but clearly, this is very complex.
And I want to echo, now that we can talk, Counsel Phillips' comment. This, for me, this is not a matter of dealing uniquely with a certain group of taxpayers. It's a unique business, and timeshares are complex, and there are different ways of managing it. And that's one of the reasons that I brought the state statute. As a business, the businesses do need to operate and figure out how to operate within the confines. And we need to, as a council, be consistent in terms of how the application of taxes, how they're collected, who's doing it. And I think when we come down to a timeshare, it, this is definitely an area that there have been some very legitimate concerns raised about the process. And not unlike you collect the homeowners, whatever the dues is in terms of maintenance, and I'm sure when you don't have the sales of those and those properties sit vacant, those costs get absorbed in certain ways by the business and may at some point get passed on. So this is all a part of this discussion in terms of just trying to arrive at something that is fair. And I think it's a legitimate item for this council to be discussing, and I think there's some good points. So I agree that we definitely need to continue this, not just have this pop up at some other point. There should be a lot of work and dialogue going on between now and whenever this may be revisited by another council. So thank you. Quickly, very quickly.
I'd like to thank you for, you know, my passing this ordinance, but it's, and I'm sorry, I don't know everybody up here. As one gentleman said, you know, the city of Ellsworth, you know, exorbs, you know, their nonpayment of taxes. We are taxpayers of the city of Ellsworth. What this would have done would just concentrated hours on us instead of the whole city like everybody else does. And thank you for consideration.
Okay. All right, the consent agenda. Consent agenda. All items with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member so requests. In which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Number eleven, council order number zero-one-two-zero-zero, request to the city clerk for approval on the time. Polling place is open for the March third, 2020, state of Maine presidential primary election at eight AM. Number, item twelve, council order number zero-one-two-zero-zero-one, request to the city clerk for appointment of wardens and ward clerks for the four voting districts within the city of Ellsworth for the March third, 2020 state of Maine presidential primary election. Item thirteen, council order number zero-one-two-zero-zero-two, request to appoint David Burks, currently an alternate member, to the planning board as a full member with an expiration date of June thirtieth, 2020. Item fourteen, council order number zero-one-two-zero-three, request to appoint Mark Rich to the planning board as an alternate member with an expiration date of June thirtieth, 2020. Item fifteen, council order number zero-one-two-zero-four, request to appoint Jeffrey Toothaker to the board of appeals as a full member with an expiration date of June thirtieth, 2024. And item number sixteen, council order number zero-one-two-zero-five, request to appoint Mike White to the board of appeals as an associate member with an expiration date of June thirtieth, 2024. Do any council members like to remove any of those items for a separate discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move approval as presented. Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. New business, item seventeen, public hearing in action on the application for issuance of the following business licenses. Before I move forward, Madam Clerk, is everything in order? First one, Jeff and Diane Kelly Lockex, doing business has eighty-six, this, one-twenty-five Main Street for renewal of a city class B vicueller liquor and amusement and renewal of a state restaurant class three and four malt and vinous liquor license. Public hearing gets open. Would anybody like to speak? Public hearing is closed.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
And a motion?
Second.
And seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. G C Pizza Hut, LLC, DBA Pizza Hut, two-eleven High Street for renewal of a city class C vicueller and liquor license and renewal of a state restaurant class four malt liquor license. Public hearing's open. Public hearing's closed.
Move approval.
You have a motion?
Second.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Susan Sherbal, DBA Dion's, thirty-five Eastwood Lane for renewal of a city class C vicueller and liquor license and renewal of a state restaurant class three and four malt and vinous liquor license.
Move approval.
Wait, have you got to open this house here?
Oh, I forgot.
Public hearing's open. Public hearing's closed. We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. And the Grand, one-sixty-five Main Street for renewal of a city class B license vicueller liquor and amusement and renewal of a state other auditorium theater class three and four malt and vinous liquor license. Public hearing is open. Public hearing is closed.
Move approval.
You have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Item eighteen, a presentation by the Ellsworth Historic Preservation Commission on the Museum in the Streets project.
Thank you for your time. We'll try and be quick. We thought this might be a nice time to introduce the project more publicly to the town council and introduce members in our process for doing a project that's been in the works since 2014, believe it or not. We've been working diligently, but it has taken a while to do. My name's Carla Haskell, a former member of the Preservation Commission, business owner, architect. I'm here with Carolyn Ackerman from the Ellsworth Historic Commission, Terry Cormier from Ellsworth Historical Society, and Bill Fogle from the, the president of the Historic Society. So we are here to represent the work that we're doing on this project. We have community partners that we've been meeting with. Our goal is to raise funds for grants. Carolyn will actually present some of the finances, some of which on behalf of the city. The city is a partner with us as we're reaching out for grants. The presentation that we have, these are the boards. You see these boards set up in different communities. It's essentially a walking tour through Ellsworth describing certain historic sites. And one of the exciting parts of what this presents is maybe not exactly the building that you see, but the history of the site and maybe buildings that used to occupy those sites. So there's a nice depth. We'll also have an opportunity for business sponsorships for five hundred dollars. We're, we're willing to have a representation of a business who will participate in the sign project. We have nineteen signs along with two index boards that will be located at Nolton Park and one actually at the intersection that we were just talking about at Main Street. As far as the locations, we have various locations and we can send out the information on the specifics. We've tried to, over these years, accommodate a variety of different aspects of the city history, so it's not just building-related. It actually has to do with shipbuilding. It has to do with activities, the flood, the great flood, the great fires. So we really feel pretty excited about the educational opportunities. There'll be an accompanying website also that will, after the work is done, getting all the signs together. We've met with the Public Works Department to discuss the process and when we might be working with them to actually spot where each sign will be located. We've been working with the planning department just to make sure that they're clued in on what we're doing and we're receiving feedback along the way. Carolyn, you can give a sense of where we're at.
Carolyn Ackerman, we have anticipated the total cost of the project is twenty-five thousand dollars. Information panels, which is a main base company, by the way, even those, these are internationally known signs. Thirteen thousand, eight hundred for the panels, three thousand for the posts, a thousand dollars to make available brochures that people can pick up at various spots in the town, so they will have direction on which way to walk. And we've also included quite a bit of money for not only the installation but maintenance down the road, a little contingency fund. So that's twenty-five thousand dollars. In hand, we have nearly ten thousand dollars. Five thousand of that came from the city from Bangor Hydro, which is related to that lovely gray pole out in the corner of State Street and Main Street. And we have received the rest of four thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars in individual business and grant money to date. And we will be applying for some additional grant money, and we'll be asking business, businesses and individuals to help sponsor signs and help us in any way that they can, because we're very excited about this project, especially in connection with some other things that are happening in the downtown and because it's Maine's two-hundredth anniversary. So we're hoping to get to the manufacturer this spring so we can get things ready for the summer.
I'm Terry Weed Cormier. I'm a member of the Historic Commission as well as the Ellsworth Historical Society, and we have been working on it for quite a while. We've been having a lot of fun going through things. I brought just a sample of some of the work that we have been doing while we're working on this project, which is gathering a lot of photos and a lot of information over the years, just trying to find out different things about places. We've learned a lot. And so this is kind of just a sample of kind of the work that we're doing, working with the commission. We're very excited to help sponsor this. It's something that we really need here, to be able to work with the community and the students. I heard from a friend of mine that grew up here, and she teaches here, and she's so excited about it, to be able to work, bring her students not just to the museum, but to be able to do this walking tour with the kids. And we're really excited about being able to go with them too and tell them more about our community, so. Bill, did you have anything?
No?
No?
Okay.
I have a question. How much does, does it cost to make one of those signs?
Sign is fifteen hundred? We can get you the breakdown of the information. At this point, I, I can't remember.
Because the thirteen thousand, eight hundred includes the two large panels.
Right, so it's a, it's a package based on the number of plaques, the number of information signs.
So you have that sign plus two panels?
We'll have nineteen of these placed throughout Ellsworth and then two large panels that will be almost like an index describing the general history of Ellsworth.
At the site of each sign?
Yeah, so what we have is main boards located, one main board, index board at Nolton Park, and another index board at the corner of Main Street and State. So those will be basically giving a general history and an index of the map, where the walking path. So this is introducing people to a walking path that takes you through Ellsworth.
Now, one of those little things right there. Am I correct in thinking that they're not going to be with the other big panels? They're going to be spread out around the city?
Correct.
Okay. How much would one of those cost?
Well, to tell you the truth, I have to get back to you on the individual cost. I don't think I could do the math in my head, but they are a package product. So in fact, we're buying a whole set of plaques. We're buying the nineteen plus the two boards.
But somebody mentioned, somebody mentioned that people could sponsor them.
Yes, well, we do have five hundred dollars of sponsorships for each board, so that's what we're, we're setting up.
Okay, okay.
Thank you for, if that wasn't clear.
I will, I will sponsor one.
Oh, awesome. Well, there we go. Sold. And, and so...
I had to, I had to narrow this down, though.
Well, and of course, I forgot to mention, of course, you were one of our early people who we sat down and went over your photographs with, so. But that is the, that is the enthusiasm that we are trying to broadcast for this project, and thank you for kicking that off. We'll be sending out a letter to businesses after this presentation, and, and I think that community supports what this should be all about, anyway.
Counsel Manchin, how many did you want?
Yes.
Oh, no, you just wanted to be recognized. Sorry.
Two questions.
Yes.
One of the sign boards at Main and State Street?
Yes. Where?
Where?
Yeah, and that's, that, so this project is overwhelming in many regards. There's a lot of details. So Carolyn and I actually did walk through and look at each site. We have some options. We want to talk to Public Works to see, we really see ourselves getting a finite location set. We actually did find a couple of places that it is possible. Then we'll walk through with Public Works to see if it's a good spot.
Those two possibilities are?
Well, with that particular sign, we're looking at a space in between the gray pole and what was, what was something else? It was couched in between two existing elements. And we thought that might be a good safe spot because we also have to take into account plows and that sort of a thing. So, we'll be going over it very carefully with Public Works.
And handicap access would also be?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Absolutely.
You know what sizes are the information signs?
They are bigger. They're almost this size, a little bit bigger, to tell you the truth.
Are they freestanding, Carla?
No, they will be pole-mounted. And that's part of the cost that we have put together. Right. There's a free, some can be building-mounted also, or wall-mounted, whatever the circumstances are.
And the smaller signs, for the most part, same deal on a pole?
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
Just a quick comment. And other than wanting to say this is a great project, I think this is wonderful. But two things. One, they wanted to come before you today because obviously, these are going to go on city streets that you have responsibility for. But the other factor, correct me if I'm wrong, but you may be applying for grants where, as the Historic Commission, you're an instrumentality of the city. So, it would go through city halls.
That is correct.
They just want you to be aware of, they're out there.
That's right. The city actually has an account held for us. So, we are working
So, if a grant shows up someday, they don't want you to be surprised.
Right.
If Counselor Moore doesn't pay for all the signs himself.
Oh, thank on that one.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 19, public hearing in action on amendments to the City of Ellsworth Code of Ordinances, Chapter 36, General Assistance Ordinance.
Good evening. Katina House, General Assistance Director. There's just been a small increase to Appendix H, General Assistance Ordinance. It is the burials and cremation maximums. They did an overall look at how much it costs to do a burial and a cremation. And the fees have stayed the same for so long and has gone up tremendously. The funeral homes are having to write off a ton of money when anybody comes to the city asking for help for a cremation or a burial. So, the whole state went in and looked at this. And there's been a slight increase in the maximums. That is the only appendix that has changed currently.
Counselors, any questions before, or comments before you open up the public hearing? Okay. Then we'll open the public hearing. Would anybody like to speak? We will close the public hearing. Counselors?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. You keep. Item 21, Council Order Number 012007, request of the Director of Development Services to authorize the purchase of updated aerial imagery under the state's GIS OrthoImagery Mapping Program at an estimated cost of $19,000 to be funded with tax increment financing TIF.
19.
He's covering that one, too.
Twenty.
Twenty. Sorry. Sorry. I checked the wrong one.
I was going to say, I'm prepared for both.
Let me go backwards.
It's all good.
Is that mesmerizing conversation?
Item 20, Council Order Number 02006, request of the Director of Development Services to authorize the city manager to accept a grant award of $25,000 from the MDOT PPI Grant Program for Design Study to Extend the city's bike pedestrian trail.
Good evening. Jana Richards, Director of Development Services. We did apply for a main Department of Transportation Planning Partnership Initiative grant back in early December. The purpose of that grant application was to help fund a study that would look at alternatives to connections between the city's existing bike pedestrian trail, which ends around Birch Avenue, and connect that with the Sunrise Trail, which ends around Beals Avenue and High Street. So, it's a feasibility study and assessment. And what they look at is how to safely cross between those two trails. They'll look at any improvements that need to happen at crossings, road crossings. So, of course, we have one major crossing at Main Street that would be heavily looked at in terms of traffic flow and pattern. How would putting a crossing there affect our existing traffic patterns? And how could people safely cross there? Would it be just a regular crosswalk? Would we need flashing beacons? Signage would be included in this study. So, we were approved for the grant in December. The grant does require a 50% match. They funded us with $25,000. And we are looking to fund the 50% local match evenly from TIF, the MITF budget for economic development, as well as the local roads funds.
Counselor Miller.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I didn't want to steal your thunder. They did come to the Recreation Committee, Counselor Cole and Jana, and they asked for approval from the committee to move forward with this project. And they voted unanimously to do so.
Counselor Phillips.
I assume that this is a required step to obtain any more money from the state to furthering it.
Correct.
As I read it, just it's kind of like we're going to look at things, say how good it is, but really nothing of any substance in there, but a requirement, I assumed.
Well, in order to put it in a work plan, the DOT will require a practicable scope of work. And that, this is what, hopefully, this will do.
Right.
Ball lines a necessary item for going to get anything done.
It's a design study. What will it cost? What will it look like? And then hopefully, we can shepherd it through the DOT process to get funding.
I would just comment, I think I've heard consistently and repeatedly that walkability and having more opportunities in the city is a high priority for many people in this community. So, it's a great opportunity, I think. Counselor Blanchett.
And just to be clear, this is an extension of the bike ped path?
Correct.
To meet up with the Sunrise Trail. It is not an extension of the Sunrise Trail
Motorized version.
Motorized version. And secondly, as, I'm not bashful about telling other members of the council and other people, I'm very much a health and nutrition wonk. And knowing the rate of diabetes and the rate of obesity in this country since 1990 has tripled and in some cases quadrupled. People are not getting out to get exercise. People are losing their health. People are dying early because of it. And if the city can contribute to lessening those burdens and those ills, literally and figuratively, for this, what I see is few dollars for what we get in return, then I would wholeheartedly support it.
It's healthcare. I'm on board.
Mr. Chairman, authorize the city managers to execute the necessary agreement to accept the $25,000 grant from the MDOT PPI Grant Program for Design Study to Extend the city's bike pedestrian trail with a 50% local match evenly allocated from budgeted TIF and local roads funds.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. I would say that this evening, I feel like I have to go home and diet and exercise now from that angle of the table.
I need to carry this.
All right. You probably haven't heard this one before, but item 21, Council Order Number 012007, request of the Director of Development Services to authorize the purchase of updated aerial imagery under the state's GIS OrthoImagery Mapping Program at an estimated cost of $19,000 to be funded with tax increment financing TIF funds.
Hello again. Jana Richards, Director of Development Services. Yep. So, we have the opportunity again to purchase six-inch resolution orthoimagery from the state's GIS OrthoImagery Mapping Program. We currently have the 2014 six-inch resolution imagery. We use it quite frequently from planning and development. It helps us map for site location and development. We use it for public safety, for public works. We use it when other organizations come to us and ask us to make maps for them. We use it as a base map layer. It is on our public GIS website that residents of the city of Ellsworth and other people who are interested in locating to the city of Ellsworth can use. And it's a great investment, if you ask me. I'm a big user of it. And so, because of economies of scale and local buy-in from many municipalities, and I think I included all those municipalities that have bought in in the past, we're able to get it at a fairly reduced rate. This year, I am asking that we do spend an additional $850 to get the Mr. Sid mosaic file of the imagery. So, in the past, we were given the imagery as just separate tiles. And we are a very large city. So, when you go to upload that imagery to utilize the entire set to look at the entire city, the uploading time for that is very, very slow, to the point that I, at one point, had it on an external hard drive to hook up to my computer. But for other users in this building and then to actually put it up onto our site, it does crash the site from time to time. So, a compressed file, what that would do is obviously reduce the load time. And then it's seamless. So, you just click on the file. It comes up and the whole entire city is there at your fingertips. So, I do think it's worth it this year to purchase that for an additional $850. So, I do recommend that we purchase the updated 2019 imagery as we did in 2014 and also purchase the Mr. Sid file this year.
Counselor Blanchett.
Jana, I know I asked you the other day, but just for the public certification, the cost here for the six-inch resolution is $18,000. And that may seem like a lot to some people. I've seen this. I know what it can do. And it blows my mind. What's the cost for the three-inch, the higher-res, three-inch resolution?
So, we almost didn't even, actually, I don't think I put it on there because it will blow your mind. It's $53,000 for a three-inch resolution.
I'll take 18 over 53. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. And there is something to be said about different resolutions. I did say this the other day at the meeting, is that, you know, just because something has a 24-inch resolution, we do use that when we are looking at the entire city as a whole, sometimes or the region. When it comes to a six-inch resolution, it's when we're looking at site development or an area of the city for, let's say, a drainage issue or something like that. It lets us focus in and we can actually see where catch basins are located. We can count numbers of parking spots. We can see where cars are parked. I mean, this is great imagery for us to utilize. Our assessing department and our code enforcement department can see it. If there's any issues on a property, they're able to look at building footprints. So, there is, you know, six-inch resolution is great, but sometimes we have to use like 24-inch resolution, too. So, thanks.
Counselor.
Some of the products I've seen come out of this, I borrow from Mark, they're unbelievable. They're incredible. You can look down and see anything you want. It's sort of, we all people can remember fearfully waiting for 1984, based on the book, where people could be watched by the government and everybody else. We're there. We've got drones that fly around. We've got satellites and so forth, when it's used for good things, which this would. It's amazing.
Believe the three-inch resolution and read the wording off a manhole cover. I don't think we need that, but incredible.
I don't know if somebody shaved that day.
Counselor Kaplan.
Just a few questions, Sean, because this is relatively new to me.
Sure.
First, what does this do that Google Maps doesn't do?
Yeah. So, Google Maps resolution is, it's not very good. So, we, Google Maps will update their imagery based on state imagery. So, they actually steal from us. We don't usually steal from them. If you zoom in on Google Maps, you'll get very pixelated imagery. If you try to capture a screenshot of it and then use it for other mapping purposes, again, it's very pixelated. Another thing that, so, I would love to show you GIS sometime because basically, in GIS, everything has a coordinate system. And this will come with the coordinate system of the other layers and data that we use. So, when I turn on all the parcels in Ellsworth and then bring in this imagery, they line up perfectly together, which wouldn't happen if I brought in a screenshot clipped image or something like that from Google Earth.
And my second question is, I have actually logged on to the GIS system before, as well as all the zoning maps. And it'll tell you like soil levels and all sorts of really cool stuff. But can I see my property lines superimposed on this?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, absolutely. So, if you go onto that website, you would select this as your base map. And then you would turn on our parcel layer. The one thing that I would caution everyone is that this is for planning purposes only. So, don't go like build a fence based off of what we put on there.
Taxation.
Yeah. 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 I would say, go get a survey of your land before you build something. But it will give you that general idea of where things are located. And yeah, you would be able to see it. It is pretty cool. We use that. If we have a meeting with a developer or a landowner or something like that, we always will create a map and bring it just for reference purposes when we meet with them.
Just want to add to, this is coming out of Economic Development Funds for all those reasons that Jana cited. But in the economic development realm, if somebody's interested in investing here, this information's invaluable because it gets down to a granular level where a business can make citing decisions based on that. And then, a GIS with like Jana can add attributes to it and attributes. So, everything from, I've seen it, up to 50, 60 attributes, if, you know, in terms of utilities and culverts and manholes and catch basins, all that kind of stuff.
And we can create data off of this. So, not to be too technical, but if there's elevation to a property, we can create what's called a hill shade. And you can see where the high points and the low points are located. So, it is really great imagery to be able to utilize when we are using GIS.
And lastly, if I could, we're also piggybacking on with the county because they're, if the county weren't going forward, we wouldn't be. So, the opportunity is here now.
You ready?
I'm ready.
All right. Mr. Chairman, move to authorize the purchase of updated aerial imagery under the state's GIS OrthoImagery Mapping Program at an estimated cost of $18,850 to be paid with the TIF funds available from the FY 2020 Economic Development Budget.
Second. Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Item 22, Council Order Number 012008, request of the police chief to renew the regional communication center third shift dispatch services agreement between the Hancock County Commissioners and the city of Ellsworth.
Good evening, counselors. Chief Glenn Mosher. And I'm here tonight to ask that the council approve to continue the contract that we have with the Hancock County RCC for overnight dispatch services. This is the third year of this agreement. And again, they have asked for a 3% increase, which covers the cost of the contractual pay increase for the current dispatchers that they employ over there. The service has worked very well for us. It's still at the cost of $29,292. It's still well below what it would cost us just to man our own dispatcher for that time period. And you will notice that you're not, we're not seeing a full 3% increase because over the last year, we discontinued dispatch services for the town of Trenton. And they contracted independently with the RCC. So, we no longer, we no- So we no longer, we no longer dispatch for them during the daytime. They go exclusively with the RCC. So the full three percent, we didn't see the full three percent. It actually has decreased since last year because of the removal of Trenton from our services. Happy to answer any questions, concerns, comments?
Councilwoman Lachette?
Chief, as I recall, this has worked out probably even better than was expected since we implemented this. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, we, we really have no complaints. I think the overall service that we receive from, you know, from the RCC is, is probably not up to the exact standards that we have with our own dispatch, at least from the police side of, of things. But they've provided service that's certainly comparable. They've helped out in opportunities where we've had a short, shortfall of, of employment, where we've needed coverage for a couple hours here or there because of someone who's out sick or some shift we can't fill. So all in all, it's, it's been a, you know, an outstanding agreement, and I don't see any reason why it, it won't continue to be so.
Councilwoman Lachette?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the agreement between the City of Ellsworth, Maine, and Hancock County Commissioners for the Regional Communication Center third shift dispatching services as presented.
Second.
Motion is second. Further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item twenty-three, council order number zero-one-two-zero-zero-nine, request to approve a consultant agreement with the firm for the purpose of conducting a facility study for the Hancock County Technical Center. At this point, the committee is working diligently, and it's still, the committee is not at the point in terms of being able to bring this forward to the council. So I would entertain a motion to remove this item from the agenda.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor? Let's remove. Item twenty-four, council order number zero-one-two-zero-one-zero, request of the finance director with, to withdraw up to twenty-five thousand dollars from capital reserves for professional services relating to the solar renewable energy RFP, including legal and technical review, as well as conducting due diligence.
As you know, the city issued a request for proposals for solar slash renewable energy projects, proposals back in the fall. I closed out December eighteenth, and we had nine proposals. We were thrilled with the response, very robust, lots of options. The solar slash renewable energy committee appointed by the, the chair, which I believe includes Councilor Miller, Grindel, as well as former Councilor Fortier, plus staff, is scheduled to begin, I shouldn't say begin its work, but begin review, formal review of the proposals a week from tomorrow evening. Up to this point, George Wood, otherwise known as Woody, who's had a long-term relationship with the city and guided the city on, on energy matters before I got here, has worked with us. He has been just crucial, his guidance in getting us to the position where we have these proposals on the table. This is very, very complicated stuff. In the end, the goal is to get a favorable, long-term, up to twenty years, power purchase agreement that will save the taxpayers money in the end. Obviously, we're going to be negotiating, so there's not a lot I can say. However, think of it in this way. The, I believe the credit, the net metering credit from the state is just under fifteen percent for qualified projects, not only solar, but in some cases hydro. We have, we purchased five million kilowatt-hours of power a year through the school, the city, and all its component units. So for every penny we're able to go below that fifteen cents, the city will save fifty thousand dollars. And I'm not going to say tonight what that range could be, but I see Councilman Miller shaking his head, and Grindel, I'm sure, have seen the proposals. There's opportunity there. So there's a lot of upside potential, but we need expert, continuing expert guidance from George Wood, as well as hiring appropriate legal counsel. We're not saying we're going to go up to twenty-five thousand dollars, but when the negotiations begin, the due diligence and other things, we got to be ready to move. I would say that we will consult, if you approve this, with the finance committee as we go along on this effort, and we're very excited, but it's new ground for us as well, and we need the help.
From what I've heard, this is a, a really good thing for us to be entertaining, that it, it could result in some substantial savings for us. And in a certain measure, kind of put us on the map in the state of Maine. We've had to go in that direction with some of the things we've done. I think, I think it's a great thing.
I will say, I've heard from people that, you know, it's difficult when you're going out in front of something because it's all new, but the potential benefit for those communities that are stepping forward right now, I think it's really going to pay off in the end.
Mr. Chairman, authorize the finance director to withdraw up to twenty-five thousand dollars in capital reserves for professional services relating to the solar renewable energy RFP, including legal and energy consulting services, and authorize the city manager to procure such services as needed.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Item twenty-five.
Second.
Any? We are adjourned.
Good discussion.
No discussion.